We're here for the regular meeting of the Elmhurst City Council. It is 7:45. I would ask that -- oh, okay. We have a group here from Hawthorne and -- Emerson. Okay. So we have the Weeblo Den here, and I'm going to invite them up. And while they're getting ready, I will let -- I'll make it official for the record. This Weeblo Den not only toured City Hall, they elected young Jake here, Mayor. Jake was smart enough to hold a meeting in which, by a narrow vote of five to three, they passed a law that everybody in their family gets extra dessert, including siblings for the week. So it's a close vote, a lot of good conversation, but appreciate that dessert overcame, quite frankly. I would ask you all rise and join me in the pledge led by Weeblo Den Two. And I'm going to ask you gentlemen to kick it off.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job. Thank you. Okay. Quick moment, please call a roll.
Leder.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Bram.
Here.
Palomsky.
Here.
York.
Here.
Toledo.
Here.
Park.
Here.
Levin.
Here.
Kennedy. Absent. Conquest. Absent. Brennan.
Here.
Mulliner.
Here.
Deuter.
Here.
Sabatino.
Here.
Twelve present and two absent.
Twelve present, two absent, we have a quorum. On to Agenda Item Three, receipt of written communication from the public. At this time, is there anybody who has any written communication they wish to submit? If so, please raise your hand if you have any written communication. Seeing none, we'll go on to Agenda Item Four, Public Forum. This is an opportunity for anybody in the audience to address the council on anything they so choose. We ask that you specifically address your comments to the chair when you're called. We ask that you make way to the microphone over to my right, your left. Out of respect for work that we have to get done here this evening, and respect for other folks that may want to speak, we ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. I will be keeping time. If you go over your three minutes, I will give you a gentle reminder and ask you to wrap up your comments. We are recording this, so we ask that when you get to the microphone before you start speaking, you state your name. Your address is optional. Clerk Malone, at this time, is there anybody who signed up for public forum?
Jeremy Demonte and Joseph Sampevy?
All right.
Hello, everyone. My name is Joseph Samperi, and this is Jeremy Demonte. We're students here at Elmhurst College, right down the street, and we are part of Alpha Tau Omega as a fraternity on campus, and we are doing a philanthropy event December 3rd, and we'd like to let the community know. It is pictures with Santa, and Jeremy is going to go into a little more about that.
Yeah, so every year around this time, we host Pictures with Santa, which is a philanthropy event. All of the proceeds go to Toys for Tots, but it's an event where campus and community members can take a picture with Santa, enter a gingerbread-making competition, eat candy canes and hot cocoa. It's a really great event. We would really like to see more community members come to the event. It's December 3rd, Tuesday, from 11:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. If you cannot make it, we will be having our donations on our Facebook page at Alpha Tau Omega at Elmhurst College, but we really encourage you guys to come, or you're more than likely to -- you're more than welcome to donate.
Wait, excuse me, Joan. You said it was December 2nd, 11:30 to 1:00. Where is it?
My apologies, it's December 3rd. It's in Frick Center, the main building on campus. Right as soon as you walk in, it's in Founder's Lounge, and you'll see all the decorations.
Great, Frick Center. Glad to hear it.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, guys.
Claude Pagash.
Claude Pagash, 566 West Gladys. Been away for a while. Been turning on the station to hear what the council's been doing the last couple of meetings. Alls I heard was about the airport, but that was at the meeting I was last at. Would hope that the council would telecast the meeting as they follow, not the meeting three weeks ago. Council's going to be voting on a budget shortly. Yes, they are. And the school board's going to vote on a budget. Park District's going to vote on a budget. Schools got their bond issue. Cities definitely got their bonds. And the Park District would like bonds. Interesting, isn't it? Well, state would like to change the state income tax, and they passed their budget and ain't got enough money. I'm sure the city council will not live with old last year's budget. There'll be a reason to raise it. Park District will raise it. The one thing that our elected bodies don't think about is whether the salaries or the people they increase taxes on are rising at the same rate that they feel they need money to spend. All for a good purpose, no doubt about it. The unfortunate thing is, population of the state of Illinois is dropping. In fact, the two major parties got together to talk about property taxes. And they talked about them all right. It's about as far as it went. So I asked this council, "Yeah, I know you need more money to run the city, and all the other legislative bodies have to have more money to run their little part of it, but do you honestly believe that the income of the people you represent, their incomes are matching your desires?" Because you're going to vote on it, but there are fewer and fewer of the people in this So consider it. I know it costs money to run the city and all the other individual departments, but you've got to think about that resident out there because business community ain't contributing. They're collecting, and you're giving money away like it's for nothing.
I would ask you to wrap up your comments, Mr. Pagash.
So alls I'm asking is body and all the other bodies that we've elected, just think about that soul out there that's got to take Peter's family and pay his mortgage, because when he ain't got it, he ain't got it.
Okay, that's it for public forum for this evening for folks who signed up. Is there anybody in the audience who did not have an opportunity to sign up in our sign-in sheet but wishes to address the council at this time? So please raise your hand so I can get a count. Seeing none, that wraps up public forum for this evening. Announcements, Agenda Item Five. Any announcements from the dais? Alderman Deuter.
Thank you, Mayor. Alderman Sabatino and I are having a First Ward Town Hall meeting this coming Wednesday. The meeting will be from 7 o'clock to 8:30, and it will be in the conference room right at the top of the stairs here at City Hall. And Alderman Sabatino and I will be around for a half hour before the start of the meeting and a half hour after the conclusion of the meeting for additional discussion. If anyone's interested, please join us. Thank you.
Alderman Palmsky.
Thank you, Mayor. Tomorrow night at 7:00 p.m. at Bryan Middle School, the City of Elmhurst Commission on Youth is hosting an event called Wake Up Call, in which there's a life-size exhibit of a teen's bedroom and 20 red flags that can signal drug or alcohol use. There's a presentation, and at 6:30 before, there's a resource fair in the lobby. During the event and after the event, there will be professionals available to answer questions and provide resources, handouts, materials, and all are welcome. Thanks.
Any other announcements? Alderman Park.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to share on behalf of the Spring Road Business Association that on this Friday, they're getting in the holiday spirit and having the annual tree lighting that's by the big pine tree at the Prairie Path and the gazebo. Had a tough time getting that one out. It's going to start at -- go for an hour from 6:00 to 7:00. The Lincoln Singers and maybe another school group is going to be singing from 6:15 to 6:45, and there'll be cookies and, of course, a surprise celebrity appearance by Santa, who will come in on a fire truck right here. So all are welcome to attend, and hopefully it will be mild weather.
Terrific. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll go on to Consent Agenda. At this time, is there anybody who wishes to have anything pulled from the Consent Agenda to vote no or provide additional comment? Alderman Bram.
6.8, 6.15.
6.8, 6.15. Anyone else? All right, I want to entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda minus Item 6.8 and 6.15. Motion by Alderman York, seconded by Alderman Toledo. Clerk Malone.
Leder.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy, absent. Conquest, absent. Brennan.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays, and two absent.
Twelve ayes, zero nays. Motion carries. On to Agenda Item -- let me second here. I'm doing Item 6.8. This is a report out of Public Works that asks Clerk Malone to read the recommendation.
It is therefore the recommendation of the Public Works and Building Committee that the city approved the stormwater detention fee in lieu of request for the 183 North Addison Avenue project, that the developer be required to pay $390,000 fee at the time of the full building permit issuance, and that the city attorney be authorized to prepare the appropriate documentation for council approval.
Yeah.
Signed, Jim Kennedy, Chair; Marty Deuter, Vice Chair; Alderman Brennan; and Alderman Mark Sabatino.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just clarify one thing, that's $3,990.
Yep, $3,990. Okay. To put this forward, council, ask for a motion to approve the report and recommendation as read. Motion by Alderman Deuter, seconded by Alderman Sabatino. Alderman Deuter, your report.
Thank you, Mayor. The details of this request are outlined in the report. I will just remind folks that it was maybe about a couple of years ago that we passed a policy requirement that, in any case of a commercial development or multifamily development, if they are increasing their impervious surface, there would be a calculation, and the increase in impervious surface would be required to be stored on-site. And there is an opportunity for a payment in lieu. That was also part of the ordinance. So in this case, this is for the Lennar Development, they came to us with a request for a payment in lieu of their required on-site storage. The development is actually decreasing the amount of impervious surface. Right now, it's a building and parking lot with just a very small amount of greenery. With the new proposed building, they are actually going to be increasing the amount of green space. It's going to be in the form of green space on the roof of the building. The building is lot line to lot line. So you would assume, I think staff's initial assumption, Lennar's initial assumption, is that because of the decrease in impervious surface, there would be no stormwater requirement. And at some point recently, I don't know if it was the surveyor or someone from city staff, observed a restrictor in one of the storm hole covers in the parking lot. And after some digging at City Hall, the records indicated that at some point, I think it says 1988, the parking lot was built, and they did put on a restrictor to get a little bit of storage on that surface parking lot. The amount of storage is point, the equivalent to .03 acre-feet. So they are -- it's not because of a decrease in, or an increase in impervious surface that they're, that they have this obligation. It is because of the existing storage that was there by, I think this is by the county ordinance, they would be required to maintain that. They are asking us to waive that requirement. They looked, they brought their engineer to our meeting, they discussed a number of different ways that they considered providing the stormwater on-site. None of them worked with the development as it has been proposed, and at this stage, because it was something that was discovered very recently, it's something that would be very difficult and expensive to try and incorporate, that basically be redesigning their building. So we took all of those things into consideration. We asked Burke to look at this. There is no perceivable downstream impact, and after discussion at committee, we agreed to approve this waiver and that they will be paying the payment in lieu of the stormwater storage.
Okay. Alderman Bram.
Thank you. I do understand that we do give the opportunity for a fee in lieu of. We've done that in the past, at a greater fee in the past. My concern with this is that I think a fee in lieu of should be the last resort. The monies that are proposed in this case, and I know we're following some, I don't know if it was DuPage County or whomever, in regards to how we calculate the fee in lieu of, but the $3,990 is a drop in the bucket. So I have concern with, you know, and many elected officials on this dais have said, especially in certain areas of town, that every part of stormwater that we can get, we should do. So I don't think $3,990 would be equivalent to getting the .03 acre-feet, albeit small. It's very, very minimal, and we're losing what we currently have at the estimate of the .03 at the current location. So I can't support this.
Any additional comments? Clerk Malone, please call the vote.
Leder.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Bram.
No.
Palmsky.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy. Absent. Conquest.
Brennan. Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Eleven ayes, one nay, and two absent.
Eleven ayes, one nay, motion carries. Agenda Item 6.8 is approved. On to 6.15, this is a resolution. I would ask Clerk Malone to read the resolution.
A resolution to approve and authorize the execution of an intergovernmental agreement between the County of Cook, the Illinois Toll Highway Authority, the City of Elmhurst, Illinois, for the improvement to the county line road project.
If this is forward, council, ask for a motion to approve the resolution as read. Motion by Alderman Deuter, seconded by Alderman Sabatino. Discussion. Alderman Bram.
Thank you. My rationale for not supporting this is the same as it was when the report was discussed. Essentially, I have great concern that we're moving forward with this with not having all the ayes dotted and t's crossed for what I deem to be potential issues for the Third Ward, and that would be additional traffic heading into the Third Ward of not having the eastbound North Avenue, what I've been calling a flyover in place or as part of this agreement. So therefore, I won't be supporting this.
Any other comments? Clerk Malone.
Leder.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Bram.
No.
Palmsky.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy. Absent. Conquest. Absent. Brennan.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Aye.
Eleven ayes, one nay, and two absent.
Eleven ayes, one nay, motion carries. Agenda Item 6.15 is approved. On to Agenda Item Seven, Committee Reports. 7.1, this is a report out of Finance. I would ask Clerk Malone to read the recommendation.
It is therefore the recommendation of the Finance, Council Affairs, and Administrative Services Committee that the city council approve the City of Elmhurst 2019 tax levy in the amount of $11,283,209, representing a 10.8% increase in the city's tax levy compared to 2018. Furthermore, it is the recommendation of the FCAAS Committee that the city council approve the abatement of all current debt service obligations for the city's general obligation bonds in the amount of $9,33,397.52. In the addition to the debt service on the proposed 2019 GO bonds, the FCAAS Committee also recommends that the city council direct the city attorney to prepare the 2019 tax levy ordinance and appropriate debt service abatement ordinance. Signed, Noel Toledo, Chair; Kevin York, Vice Chair; Alderman Park; and Alderman Bram.
Okay, to put this forward, council, I will ask for a motion to approve the report and the recommendation as read. Motion by Alderman Toledo, seconded by Alderman York. Alderman Toledo, your report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll start off by presenting this report by thanking Director Truzine, his finance staff, as well as my colleagues on the committee. We've been looking at this for several months now in preparation for making this recommendation, tuning the numbers, and especially in the past couple of weeks after the budget was published. So I thank you all for all the hard work. So I and my colleagues find ourselves in an unenviable position tonight, making a case to the council and to the residents of Elmhurst to raise taxes, but it is one that is responsible and prudent. Our pension obligations continue to put pressure on property taxes. Especially this year, we see an 18% increase in our police and fire pension contribution recommendations due to poor investment returns in 2018, and also in, as a result of reducing the assumption on our ongoing investment return assumptions from 7% to 6 and 3/4. So, at the fault of these pressures, the committee did decide to unanimously recommend a 10.8% city tax levy increase that reflects the increase in the pension contributions, but that somewhat offset by holding the rest of the city levy components flat. Additionally, the library board approved a tax levy increase of 2%. So combining the city and the library levy results in a 2019 tax levy recommendation of $19.2 million, which is a 6.97% increase from last year. For the average property owner, homeowner in Elmhurst, that would amount to about a $69 increase on their city portion of their tax bill, city and library. So in light of this increase resulting from the pension contributions, it was important to us to be able to hold down other impacts on the taxpayer that we control. So we do recommend continuing to abate all the debt service from our general obligation bonds, including the upcoming $10 million bond issue that the council approved a couple weeks ago. We're able to fund this abatement through dollars that's currently available in our stormwater fund, which is financed, as you know, by the quarter percent home rental sales tax. Some of the considerations that the committee discussed include that this recommendation does continue the past practice of the past couple of years of using general fund balance to help fund our operating expenses. So this year, we'll be recommending using about $4 million from the general fund. That projects us to bring down our surplus in that fund to be within the policy range of 25 to 33% by the end of 2020's budget year. We also discussed that our working cash fund will be within the target range of $800,000 to $1 million. In fact, it'll be at the top of that, as proposed in the budget and this levy. Additionally, as has been our past practice, we are contributing the actuarially determined amount for the police and fire pensions. And finally, we are continuing our practice of abating all the general obligation bond debt service, including, as I mentioned, the upcoming additional debt service from this upcoming issue for 2019. That was originally proposed to be in the budget, and we found a way to be able to take that off. So one other thing that Alderman York mentioned to me after I had prepared my comments is that we will be holding, if this, if we gain approval of this, we will hold the levy ordinance until after the budget discussions are substantially complete, so that if there are any material changes in the recommended budget that could affect the levy, that we could make those changes before the ordinance is passed. With that, I'll wrap up my comments. I'll thank you and ask for your support of our recommendation to responsibly fund our ongoing pension obligations through an increase in the 2019 tax levy. Thank you.
Okay. Additional questions or comments? Okay. I'll ask a couple.
Mayor.
Sorry. Alderman Levin.
Thank you. Alderman Toledo, Chair. Toledo, I thought we had a, we have a policy for the 80%. Is that, is my recollection correct in terms of, it's not statutorily determined, but that's our internal policy.
For the funding of the pensions?
Yes.
Yep, that's correct. It's a policy for us to, and it has been past practice for, I don't know, Alderman York might be able to answer how long we've been doing that, but that's to keep ourselves funding the pension obligations and not get behind and increase our unfunded liability.
Okay. Because I found a policy, but I couldn't find the 80%. I wasn't sure if that was a number that would, defer to Alderman York.
Yes, Alderman York.
So we're on the path to be 100% funded by 2033. So that's the path that we're on. We're not on an 80% funding path. We're on a 100% funding path to 2033.
Okay. That's why I couldn't find it in the policy, but the point I wanted to make, and just, I think it's important for the public to know as well, that we fund our operations as a city under property tax, sales tax, some fuel tax, and some other revenues, but this is not a matter of toeing the line on our operating budget. These increases, all of them that Chairman Toledo put out for this budget, are really to meet obligations that preexist anything we might do or how we decide to spend our money. Granted, we could say, well, we're going to be like other larger municipalities and say we're not going to meet our funding obligation and look at the trouble that we could be in. In terms of our operations, we are toeing the line and not increasing our operating budget. The library's budget is really theirs. It's their decision. We don't even have any control over that. So when we look at where we are in terms of our operating budget, we have not increased our property tax portion of that this year, and we, if you go back to the Great Recession, it's, we've probably been pretty flat. I don't, it might even be slightly less than it was since that large tax increase that was necessitated then. So I think it's a good proposal. I thank the committee for their work again as well. I don't think we have any choice, and I think it calls for a tight budget, tight fiscal controls already. controls already because we're kind of projecting some decreasing fund balances over the years, and we're going to have to keep an eye on this, as you say in your report, but I think it's a very responsible report, and I don't think we have a choice but to, to go along this route.
Alderman Brennan?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I definitely agree with Alderman Levin. I'm not happy with any tax increase. That said, I do believe the committee thoroughly debated the content in the report. Having been on the, the committee, there's a lot of hours and a lot of education that goes into, to, to the process, and, and I, I think they, they were looking for the best possible and most responsible recommendation. Reading the report, I do, I do believe that the content is exactly that. I think our pension management discipline i- is extremely important, and I really appreciate the approach that we're taking. I think it is more than responsible. I, I think it, in the long run, actually keeps us in a very good position. If we let our, our responsibilities there slide, it just digs a deeper hole for us in the long run. So that said, I don't like the tax increase. I, I agree that if you look at it holistically without the pension pressure, we'd be in pretty decent shape. That said, it's very responsible, and it'll get my support this evening.
Alderman Dunn?
What we have in front of us is a proposed tax levy with all line items in the aggregate are being, all line items except for the pension in the aggregate is, it's being held flat compared to last year, and if you look back five, six years, the city's been doing a very good job of, of keeping the levy flat or, or lowering that in the aggregate, even including the pensions. Now, the pensions are starting to get more and more visible, and the, we have a situation where we have more people on pension than we have working. So, that's, there's obviously a, a major financial commitment to, to keep that up. But I support this levy. The amount that the pension is going up compared to last year, the police and fire is about $1 million, give or take. That's a pretty large hit, but in order to reach our goal, as Alderman York was saying, to be 100% by the year 2030-30, this is something we need to be doing. So I support that. Thanks.
Additional comments? Clerk Malone?
Leader?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Bram?
Aye.
Palomsky?
Aye.
York?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Kennedy? Anquest? Absent. Brennan?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Sabatino?
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays, two absent.
Uh, twelve ayes, zero nays, motion carries. Agenda item 7.1 is approved. Onto reports, agenda item eight, reports and recommendations for appointed elected officials. 8.1, Mayor Morley. That is me. Couple things. Let me jump right in with the pension conversation. It's kind of appropriate, as we just finished discussing it. First and foremost, certainly pension is an obligation that, and a commitment that we make to the folks that work for us, police and fire, not to mention staff. So while it might be a tough pill to swallow, certainly I think everyone up on this dais believes it's well worth it. That's what these folks do for us, and the least we can do is follow up with our commitment. Though I never have an issue paying for pensions. That having been said, something happened in Springfield during veto session that I think is important to report on, and the outcome is to be determined, but I think some folks are cautiously optimistic. So basically, in the state of Illinois, you've got 649 individual police and fire pensions. And Governor Pritzker put together a pension consolidation task force a while back, and that task force, which had everybody and their mother on it, bipartisan representation, folks from IML, among other things, were on there. So we were kept abreast of this almost on a weekly basis. But it is something that the governor wanted to do, and I will point out that in this last veto session, a bill got passed, went through both houses, and it's going to go to the governor's desk probably within the week. And, you know, you never know how things are going to turn out once Springfield get their, gets their hooks in things. But in general, I'll give you an idea of what this pension consolidation is, and in theory, it seems like a very good idea. So I told you there's 649 individual pensions in the state of Illinois between police and fire, give or take one or two. Majority of those are mentioned by individual pension fund professionals. So you've got 649 individual pension funds. Certainly, there's professionals out there that manage more than one fund, but I think it's safe to say there's probably hundreds of individual managers managing those funds. So what this consolidation does, and consolidation sounds like a scary word, it doesn't consolidate the monies of those pensions. So it's like being in a bank, so my checking account doesn't mix with the city managers or Alderman Yorks as much as they may want it to. So it's, it's, it's individual, and that's the idea with these pensions. But what it does do, it does two things. One is, it's governed by a pension group. I don't want to call it a board and get corrected. It's governed by a group that will determine some of the investments, but, so you're going to save a, a chunk of money, and all those individual managers take a percentage. Now, the projections on that, I've heard, are anywhere from 40 to 70 million dollars in savings. It might sound like a little bit of a drop in the bucket. The bigger upside to this is that some of those downstate communities that have individual police and fire pension funds of 700,000, or a million and a half, or $3 million, for the most part, those small pension funds are locked out of larger institutional investing. What this aggregation does is allows, on behalf of those smaller groups, to invest in billion-dollar funds with, which much higher guaranteed rates of return. The projection is anywhere from a 1% to 2% increase in overall returns in aggregate for these funds. And if you've ever taken an economics course, or you have a retirement fund, you know the magic of compounding interest. I can tell you this, if we got a 2% better return 20 years ago on our pension investment, we would be in fantastic shape right now. So, that's the idea. Like I said, Springfield hasn't really gotten their hooks into it yet. The, the governor's going to sign it. Everyone will be watching. Springfield is usually overly optimistic, but there will certainly be a savings and a reduction on the management of it, and there should be an increase in the investment return. Ballpark can be up to $1 billion a year. We will see. We just passed our tax levy, of which, as our finance committee mentioned, can be directly correlated to our pension obligation. It would certainly be nice if we saw higher returns. It's probably going to take a little while for this stuff to get into place, but it's good to see. The other thing I'll mention that Alderman Levin mentioned is, and Alderman Dunn, for the most part, in the last six years, we've reduced our overall levy, pensions aside. I think we had two or three years of reduction in a row, one year of a slight increase, but if you average the last six years, our operating side has remained flat. Not only that, we abate the payments of our bonds. So part of the reason why we're AAA rated here in the city of Elmhurst, which puts us in the top 10% of all municipalities, is that we're home rule, and if we need to, we can turn around and tax our residents. But even with all of the infrastructure work that we've done in the last couple of years, we still have a healthy enough balance sheet where we get to abate that payment or take the payment of that debt service off the backs of our residents, and we pay it ourselves. So that's something, to do all those projects, still abate the bond payments, and really keep an operating budget that's pretty flat, and it's a testament not only to the hard work of the folks around this dais, but really city staff, because we really challenge them with doing more for less every year at budget season, which is what we're in right now. Couple of free things I want to make sure the residents are aware of. First of all, our WaterSmart program, can't say enough about our WaterSmart program. Still under 50% of the residents in Elmhurst are signed up for WaterSmart. If you want to know your water usage and you want to monitor your water usage, please go onto our website, type in WaterSmart, follow the breadcrumbs, and you'll figure out how to sign up for it, and you can monitor your own water usage. It also helps so that at the end of three months, when you get your water bill and the toilet you use in the basement you haven't used for three months has been running, and there's a $600 water bill, this would stop then in about a 24-hour cycle. So please, please go on the city website or call us. We'll help you sign up for WaterSmart. Two other free items. I happened to meet, the city manager and I happened to meet with ComEd last week, and among other things, they always like to share how great they are, and we kind of temper that a little bit. But they have been doing better certainly in the last six years or so. But one of the things we learned that was news to me, and I think news to the city manager, is that, and we're going to be issuing a press release, is that ComEd actually has a tree-cutting program. So as the council and audiences are aware, we've been very aggressive in our emerald ash borer cutting down trees. They're, quite frankly, they're a danger, and we've been cutting, way back when, we were scheduled to cut over 400 a year, because we had 4,000 of them in the city of Elmhurst, 400 a year, 10 years. We're getting toward the end of that, but there's still a lot of emerald ash borer on private property. Good news for those residents is if they have an emerald ash borer tree that is near a ComEd power line, ComEd has a program where they will remove it for free. So we're going to look into the details. They gave us a nice glossy brochure about it. We're going to issue a press release shortly this week, providing the details of ComEd, and you might be eligible to get that tree in your backyard cut down if it's next to a power line. So that's some good news. Last thing I'll mention is, and Alderman Anquest mentioned this a couple of weeks ago, a couple of months ago, and it's still true, and we'll make sure city manager to put this as part of the press release. ComEd is still offering a electric usage study for your home. My neighbor recently had it last week in which ComEd for free replaced 80 light bulbs in his house, all with LED at no cost. It's free to the residents of Elmhurst. That's going to be part of the press release. I encourage you to do that. Budget meeting immediately following this meeting, turkey trot, annual turkey trot, probably going on 36 years or so, what do we got here? On Thanksgiving, 36 years, look at that. Dan Givens Turkey Trot on Thanksgiving Day. If you haven't ever joined us, you should. It is a sight to behold. We run kind of through our downtown and around the parks. Over 7,000 participants. In fact, it's so big.
How big is it, Mayor?
How big is it? It's so big that there are people who actually have started the race and are finishing while people are still leaving the starting line. That's how big it is. It's a lot of fun, and I encourage everyone to show up. Finally, our Holly Trolley. That is our infamous and, if not soon-to-be award-winning trolley program that we are having such good luck with it, that we run it during the holiday season, the 30th of this month through the 25th of next, oh, 28th of next month on Saturdays, 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Not to be outdone, Santa will join us at City Center November 30th. Is it November 30th? Do I have that right?
Saturday.
Saturday, November 30th. Santa will be there. Details to follow. And that's it for me. City Manager?
Thank you. Just one item tonight. It's also free, and that is the cooking oil recycling event. For those who use that at Thanksgiving, we'll have a collection partnering with Scars at the Public Works Garage, November, Saturday, November 30th, from 9:00 to noon.
Leader reports. Seeing none, we'll go on to resolutions. What do they do with mine? Agenda item nine, 9.1. This is a resolution. I'd ask Clerk Malone to read the resolution.
A resolution approving the preliminary and final plat of the Bartuck re-subdivision.
I'm sorry, did you finish?
Yes.
Fantastic. All right. To put this before council asks for a motion to approve, the resolution is read. Motion by Alderman, second by Alderman Dunn. Discussion. Clerk Malone asks you to call the vote.
Leader?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Bram?
Aye.
Palomsky?
Aye.
York?
Aye.
Pluto?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Levin? Kennedy? Absent. Anquest? Absent. Brennan?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Sabatino?
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays, and two absent.
Twelve ayes, zero nays, motion carries. Onto other business. Any other business? I have some other business. I want to thank my wife for her generosity in allowing me to share my wedding anniversary with all of you tonight instead of her. I will now entertain a motion to, oh, budget meeting, five minutes following. Motion to, entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Alderman Mulliner, second by Alderman Toledo. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned. See you in five minutes.